I now call to order this January 10th Friendswood City Council meeting and announce that we have a quorum. I'm gonna call up Pastor Matt Parker. While he's coming up, would everybody stand and please let's share a moment of silence. We lost Sergeant James Dement a couple of weeks ago to COVID and just like to honor Thank you. After Pastor preaches, says their invocation, he's not gonna preach, sorry.
That's longer.
Say, say him Christ Pastor, just say the invocation, then we're gonna remain standing and pledge, do the pledges, so.
All right. The Heavenly Father, we love you and I just ask your blessing upon this time. I just pray protection over the individuals here and the families represented and I pray your wisdom will guide the conversation as they're discussing the safety and well-being of the people of Friendswood. And so God, we need you because you're smarter, you can do anything and you love us perfectly so we can trust you. Help us trust you more and in your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Have you not done your summer security training?
I did it and I passed it.
I doubt it.
I didn't have to do it again.
Yeah.
Well, okay, because some people have.
All right. Now.
You aren't going to go in your hours.
All right. Item four, council comments and reports. Councilmember Rocky? Somebody else? Yes, councilmember Aaron Wurt, what do you got?
That good? I wish, hopefully everybody had a good holiday. We, this, this meeting starts a little late, so hopefully we had a good break. As Mayor mentioned, we lost a hero in this city during the holidays, as many of you already know. Officer Dement was a staple in this city for several years. He's not only a hero in this city, but he was in life. Aside from his dedicated service to this city over the years, one of the greatest gifts was his time mentoring our youth, I believe it was over 3,000 kids that they said that at the funeral that I heard that he mentored that'll continue to go on and mentor other kids about what they learned. He touched many lives, whether it's him waving to traffic in the morning or teaching our children the dare program. He left a legacy that our city will forever have their lives touched by. One of the things that we'll never know is the children he taught will never forget what they learned from his teachings and it'll be a legacy that lives forever. Chief Weiner said it best when he closes service that it's not how long you live your life, but how you live it. And Officer Dement was terrific and we, the citizens, thank you and the Dement family, which we should all keep in our prayers, we want to thank you for sharing him with us because he left an incredible impact on our community. And you can also see this service online on, it's our YouTube channel, I believe that it's on. It's a, it's a great service if y'all want to see it. Lastly, voting season's upon us, a lot of primaries around the corner. It's a crucial voting year and be sure you're registered to vote and I think early voting starts for the primaries in a month, so make sure you get signed up. Thank you, everybody.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Grifon. Councilmember Rocky.
Yeah, the library will be hosting an AARP tax-free assistance on Mondays, October 10th, 2nd, sorry, February 7th.
35.
This service is provided free from AARP Foundation Tax Aid and contact the library for more information. Also, beginning Tuesday, January 25th, the library will be hosting a new foodie book club. The first book to discuss will be My Korea by Hooni Kim. No prep is required, discussion of the culinary craft of various cultures. Contact the library for more info and you're gonna talk about the gala tickets? Okay, that's all I have.
Councilmember Branson.
Well, I just wanted to echo Councilmember Aaron Wurt's comments. It was a very moving service for a really a hero and they talked about him being a hero. He was my children's dare officer, so it, you know, kind of touches home, but I cannot find the right words to thank someone who dedicates their life to service and especially to our young people. And they did touch on, as Brent said, that not only was he touching the lives of the children, but also their parents and it'd be hard to know how many lives he actually touched and changed and that effect is gonna be with us for a very long time. So I'm very grateful to him for his service and his family stays in my prayers because I, I'm sorry that we lost him so early. So just keep that family in your prayers, please.
And I also want to say something about Officer Dement. I have the pleasure and privilege of working with him for almost 17 of the years he was the dare officer in Friendswood. And when you think about him teaching almost 500 kids a year that he touched the lives of, that's well over, you know, 8,000 students and like Sally said, and their parents. And I heard many stories from parents and students about quotations of Officer Dement or things that he said to them. But what I remember is a gentleman and someone who was always helpful and he was definitely part of the, the city police department's family, but he was also part of the FISD family and our community and of course his own family. And he did, he made a difference on this earth, which, I mean, we all want to do. He definitely did it and, and my heart and prayers go out to his family and to all of us who will miss him. It's, it's basically.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a minute to thank our staff for an amazing December in the park, especially James, Tony, Michael Boyett. You guys, again, hit it out of the park. You know, we did all those amazing light shows at Santa and amazing stuff going on. You know, I had no idea, even when I was a city council member, I don't think I knew that there was so much going on in Friendswood. Now, of course, as the mayor, I get invitations to a lot of things and of course, Santa in the parks kind of out there, nobody can miss that, but you guys put on so many great events all year long and we already got the invite to daddy-daughter dance and I invited my own daughter, who is 29 years old, to come back and go with me and volunteer there at the dance. So amazing things going on coming up, you know, it's January 10th, Christmas will be here before we know it and so, is it too soon to start listening to Christmas music? No, no, no. Okay, all right. Moving on. Item five, public comment. In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or two, direct staff replacement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall refrain from any outbursts or interjections, including but not limited to applause, disparaging noises, and remarks. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against a city employee, aside from the city manager, city attorney, or municipal judge, should not be discussed and shall be referred to city management. Okay, item six, work session topics. Receive and discuss a presentation regarding the 2021 Charter Review Committee's report. Presentation will be given by Chairperson Robin Hall and the Vice Chair, Jim Nye. Welcome.
And Mayor and Council, before Robin gets started, I must say, I want to thank the committee for their yeoman's effort this last go-around. I haven't participated in prior committees to the extent that I did this, this time, but this particular group read the charter, if not 10 times, 12 times over the last five months and met far beyond their predecessors that have ever done. So I applaud their efforts.
Well, wait, a lot of these people.
Which is several of us, so hang on a second.
What are you saying?
I applaud the, I applaud the new members then.
The new members.
I'd like you to ignore his statements.
No, we thank you all for, for serving. It's a, it's, it is, it's a tough job and, and obviously we, I think chartered you in June or July and you've been meeting all throughout the rest of the year last year and so we thank you for all your efforts and looking forward to hearing what you say.
Awesome. So I'd like to first introduce the committee. So Jim Nye was my vice chair, Kitten Brizendine, Dave Smith, Bill Provenzato, Ron Cox, and Judy Wiggins. So there's a couple of us that have served on the committee before and this year we had some unique perspective. We've had previous council members on before, but now we had a previous mayor and a previous city manager on there, so not only experience did we gain, we gained a lot more stories as well as we went throughout. So I think that was helpful for some of the new city staff as well to say why we have some of the rationale that we have is because there's a lot of history that went with it.
Whoever picked those guys was genius.
I'm pretty sure I told you to pick them, but I'm just saying.
I said Dave Smith, you said, who's that?
So as you can see, we did meet from July. We met about every other week and we did review the charter several times. We went through it, one time, put things in parking lots, came back and revisited them, had lengthy discussions on some of them and went back several times to make sure that we were accomplishing what, what you set us out for. So a couple of our goals, we wanted to streamline the process, we wanted to make sure that we had transparency and also with technological, technology advancements, we wanted to make sure that we were bringing our charter and our city up to date with that. So we did, with every recommendation that we're bringing forward, we were unanimous with that and we have them into two buckets. We have a tier one and a tier two and then we have some other things that we aren't recommending at this time, but we know that they need to be looked at and we'll cover those a little bit later. But we feel if we bring too many forward, then it'll get lost, so we wanted to bring the top 15 forward, so. So these are some of the rationale, I'm not gonna read to you because I'm sure you can read, right? But these were the rationale that we made sure with every change that we did, we wanted to make sure that things were just and fair. We wanted to make sure that, was it fixing a correction, was it? So these are our justifications that we went back and forth with at all times. So we had a couple different classifications and rankings, so we went through, as we went through every section, does this need to change or not? Is it housekeeping? Does it just need to be cleaned up a little bit? Is it making things more efficient? Is it conforming to law? So you will see on some of those, a lot of them, since the law is much more fluid, then we're able to change the charter, then we, we are suggesting to update it to, to conform to state law. So, and that way, that is our minimum standards and if we wanted things more restrictive, then we added that in there, but a lot of these, we are, are doing it to conform to state law. And then there is a couple substantive, I can't ever say that word, major changes and so we will probably talk about those more in depth. Once we classified those, then we also ranked those and said, this was a major change or this is a not-so, not-so important change. So we ranked those one to five and you'll see those on our rankings as well. So we'll go through each one of these in depth, but I just wanted you to see what they are and a brief description on there. These are not in order of importance, they are in charter order so that we can go through the charter. So section 3.04, currently, we do not pay our mayor and council members and so we wanted to bring that forward. This one is saying the mayor would receive $1,000 a month, oh, thank you, $1,000 a month and the council members would receive $500 a month. If you note on here, we are saying that this would not start until 2030 and the reason for that is, is no sitting council member right now would be sitting here in 2030. And so we do not ever want it to be that you guys are voting yourself a salary or a raise and this would also be subject to the CPI annually, so by the time we get to 2030, it would maybe, you know, $1,012. So it would go on there. So, do you want to do, me to go through there and then questions, or do y'all want to ask questions as we go through?
I'm good with you going through it.
Okay, and then coming back.
Say your piece and then, yeah, we can.
Okay.
Sling arrows.
So the next one is 3.09, meetings of the city council. And this is more efficient, being more efficient for efficiency and it is to, for the executive meetings, just making sure that that's stating with, with state law. And so that's what that is pertaining to. 3.11, and this one, and we can look at the text when we get down, we do have in your Word document, you have that attached. This is probably one of the biggest changes that we have and I believe this one is in two parts. And so the first one is that we're only going to require the caption prescribing a penalty fine or forfeiture to be published. And then the second part of this is amendment to require only one reading of an ordinance which requires at least a public meeting under the open meetings. So for that is, if we already had to go through P&amp;Z, it's already had a hearing, if it's already had other meetings out there, then doing two readings inside is not as efficient as it can be. So it's already been out in the public, it's already looked for public comments either through P&amp;Z or other manners. So if you had something that had an amendment on there, it would need to go for the second reading. So this is only doing one reading if it is clear that first reading. The next two kind of go hand in hand. This is the city attorney and again, this is a major change. Currently, the city attorney is going direct to city council. You guys hire the city attorney, you guys set the city attorney's pay and really for efficiency of running the day-to-day operations of city hall, having the city manager be in charge of hiring, firing, salaries, management, day-to-day management and administrative duties of the city attorney is what this is. So kind of how we talked about it in the session was, there is a hard, on an organizational chart, there's a hard line from the city manager to the city attorney, but there's still a dotted line back to council, so the city attorney is still representing council, representing the, the citizens, but for the day-to-day operations and management, it's under the city manager. And the city secretary, everything that I just said holds true for that as well. So it is for the day-to-day operations, we're putting the city manager in charge of everybody Action on petition. This is conforming to law, amendment to require proposed or referred ordinance to be posted on the city's website instead of being posted at each polling location. So since we are by county, there is over 700 polling locations in Harris County and so there's no way that we can post every ordinance that we're doing at 700 polling locations and with today's electronic age, it is reasonable to have it posted up on our website. The annual budget, this is, it's conforming to law, but it's also a major change, the way that you're getting your budget, there is an extra column in there that is the anticipated year-to-date annualization. And so our understanding from staff, this was a staff recommendation, is that column is not required by state and it's not necessarily utilized and so it is a estimation of what you're going to do through the end of the year and that's on a calendar year, not your fiscal year as well, correct?
It's fiscal year, but it's a snapshot as of June 30th of the year than projecting out what it would be at the end of the fiscal year. Obviously, the, the pattern of spending varies depending on the time of year. If you look at our revenues, taxes are captured in January and February because we get all of our revenue when property taxes are paid, but the rest of the year, it's very, it trickles in. So having a column that doesn't adequately reflect the previous year does it a disservice.
The 8.05 is borrowing for capital improvements. So this is just firming up what we're doing now and making sure that it's, it's, it's stated, but it is making sure that, that council can issue debt to the extent allowed by law, but require the voter's approval if we're issuing COs, certificate of obligations.
So just to add to that, there's been a lot of ambiguity about certificates of obligations in Friendswood for the last 20-something years. This would get rid of any ambiguity and simply state that if we, in order to issue certificates of obligations, we'd have to have voter approval, just like we have for general obligation.
So those are all your tier one. Do you want to go over any questions before we hit tier two?
Go ahead through tier two and we'll just come back, yeah, we'll just come back to the start.
Okay. So General Powers, this is an amendment to authorize that we can purchase property within Harris, Galveston, and Brazoria County and those three counties are two that we reside in and Brazoria we added because it is the, another county that we touch, so we're not looking to do anything in Fort Bend County or anywhere else, but if there was an opportunity to, to purchase land, to extend out what we have. Qualifications, this was conform to law, but then also clean up if you actually look at it and the, it is, remove the qualifications to file for office from the section which pertain to the qualification. So there was two sections that kind of contradicted each other and were a little bit redundant, so we're just cleaning that up a little bit. Canvassing election results. This is an amendment to conform to the canvassing requirement according to state law. We also have one in here later that we're not putting on the ballot, but we're recommending that you put in policies and procedures. That is about swearing in a new council member before the election results have been canvassed, which is actually what we do now, which we shouldn't do. Can't swear you in before you're official, is, is the. Public service corporations to file annual reports.
Pardon me, pardon, I'm gonna make the interrupt, but we always would get sworn in after the key.
You get sworn, you were getting sworn in the night of?
No, no.
You were getting the bribery oath and you were getting a little bit of swearing?
No, we were just swearing that we hadn't cheated, you know, that, that, that form, but the actual swearing in took place in here after the canvassing, just wanted to know that.
So I'm gonna defer because I haven't been in that room, so.
So it's a clarification of the language. It's a clarification of the language because the way that it reads in the charter is that you're sworn in the night and so it's basically conforming the canvassing requirements to what is in state law. That's all it's doing.
910, whoop, let's go back. 910 is public service corporations to file annual reports. This is in there that they shall file these reports, which they don't, and so we want to change that to May. The city newspaper, we want to change it so that basically you can adjust the city newspaper on an as-needed basis and not just at specific periods of time. The other ones I'm not gonna go through, these are extra ones that we talked about and that we would like the, the future charter commissions to go through. We do ask that, the charter commission is allowed to meet every two years, a minimum, and, but has to meet every five and you can see there's a lot of changes on there and we didn't want to bring too many forward. And so one of the things that we are asking is, all of us agreed that we would like to come back in two years to cover some of the things that don't get to bubble up to the top so that we can really go through and have a clean sweep because in five years, there may be other things that are coming forward. These are some recommendations on policies and procedures. 3.03, we talked about the oath of, oath of office. So 310, just kind of clarifying some of the rules and procedures, defining supermajority in there. The 311, the ordinances in general to add a council meeting, so what it takes to add a council meeting, whether the mayor calls it, the city manager calls it, for council members, so just clarifying that in policies and procedures. And then the municipal court judge, we wanted to change this in the charter, but it didn't bubble up quite to efficiency, that we want to make sure that that is a duly-qualified, licensed, practicing attorney in the state of Texas. So right now, we don't have those requirements, but we do follow it. And then, like I said, we want to thank you for the opportunity. It's been a great group to serve with and like I said, we would like to come back to finish some of the things and then we're here for any questions that you may have, what we talked about, why we did some things that we did, or just any discussions on there.
Right. And, and council, before we move on to the individual items to discuss them a little bit more in depth, I do want to reiterate from a timeline perspective, if we are gonna have a charter election, it's gonna take place this May and we need to call that election in February. So this evening, I'm looking for some consensus amongst council of the items the committee recommended. Which ones do y'all want to move forward and have an election on this May? If any, it's completely up to the city council to make that decision, but that's the timeline and the parameters we're looking at.
Let me throw out the first question.
Sure.
For you, Robin. You said, in a couple of these slides, you said to conform to law. So are those things, are you telling us we need to do those things to be in conformance with state law? Are these, so in other words, are those sort of required, that we make those changes?
So, so if our charter does not conform to state law, we still have to conform to state law, but we're not violating our charter, but we need to make our charter match to what state law is. But even if our charter says something that we're not allowed to do, we still have to conform to the law. So we need to go ahead and get it updated to that.
So it seems like those would be the easy ones, right off the top, to say, let's do all the ones that make us in conformance with state law. Am I, am I wrong or?
From an operational standpoint, anytime there's a discrepancy between state law and our charter, obviously there has to be an evaluation as to which one's more stringent. However, there are times when they're at conflict with one another and it's not a clear, this one's more stringent and it leads to contest or legal issues that arise and from our perspective, it would be better and cleaner if it just conforms to state law, especially knowing that state law likely changes every two years and having a outdated provision in our charter becomes problematic.
Yeah. Well, any comments on, on that basic question?
I have a question about that. So if we contradict, if our charter or one of the provisions contradicts state law, do we even have to take that to the voters or can we just change that to match state law?
You'd have to change it in your charter. We would comply with state law, but you need to go ahead and change that.
And that requires a vote.
And that would require a vote of the people.
Of the public. Okay.
So right off the top, I'm gonna propose that we take all these ones that put us in conformance with state law and put those, go forward at, at least that set, okay?
Let me ask one more quick question about that. Friendswood's has always gone above and beyond what's required by state law. That which conforms to state law is state law and I agree with you, Mayor, that we need to make that right, but there are times when we do more than what state law requires, especially with budgeting and that sort of thing. So I agree with you that we should conform to law, but in instances where our charter goes above and beyond just what the minimum requirements of a law is, that we should be particularly careful before we just sweep that proposal and do it all that way.
A good example of that is 805. So state law currently allows folks to issue, cities to issue certificates of obligations without voter approval.
Right.
We're suggesting, since there's always been some ambiguity surrounding it, we're gonna comply with state law, however, we're adding the restriction to ourselves, is what we felt the charter intended, to restrict our ability to issue COs without voter approval.
Okay, that's, that's great, Mo, because I thought in instances of emergencies and really terrible things, we could issue certificates of obligations. Let's just take, for example, Yuri, the Arctic Freeze. When we slammed into that 90-day reserve, 1.67 million dollars, we were, without the state even declaring a disaster yet, looking at a really serious situation where we weren't gonna have our money. Of course, they did say it was a, a, a natural disaster and we were gonna be funded back, but it scared a lot of us up here when we saw our 90-day. but it scared a lot of us up here when we saw our 90-day reserve get slammed. And now we're saying we can't issue certificates of obligation unless we get voter approval. And in instances where we have really dire emergencies, I'm afraid if we just put that in addition to what state law is, we might be tying our hands.
We still have the provision to issue emergency debt. That's a different section within 805 that still allows us to issue debt in emergency situations.
Okay, good. I feel better about that then.
Yeah, and you've got 312 as well for emergency ordinances, to be able to cover some of that as well.
Okay.
Councilman Morad.
Did you get the rule that you wanted?
Well, I mean, I understood the direction, but I need to see a consensus amongst at least four of y'all to know what we bring back in an ordinance next month. So if it's a... Yes, ma'am.
So are there provisions, as the mayor was talking about, where we are going less than what the law requires, that we can automatically say, let's do that? Not above what the law says, but less than what the law says?
Unfortunately, similar to the 805 comment on debt, it's far more complex than either-or proposition. There are sections of our code, if you look at our budget, with regard to changing the year-to-date snapshot versus the year-end estimate. That's not more or less than what state law requires. We have a litany of things outlined in our charter section relative to budget. It's in the minutia when it's unnecessary. The state establishes a set of criteria for what the budget should include, and we're recommending that we include those items, but to get rid of anything that may be misleading. So in the budget, for instance, you have a column for the proposed fiscal year, you have a column for the year-end estimate for the current fiscal year that you're in, a column for the actual year-to-date, which is done at June 30th, then you have a column for the actuals from the prior fiscal year. So you have four columns there. One of them actually tells a true picture of where the budget's headed, or either on revenues or expenditure side. The other one is just a guesstimate based upon, hey, we're six months into the year, this is how much we spent, multiply it by two, this is what you'll likely get, and it's misleading. Get rid of the year-to-date and have a more true depiction of what you're going to finish the fiscal year at. And I'm oversimplifying it to a great extent.
Well, when you say get rid of the year-to-date, you're talking about getting rid of the year-to-date estimate, not the year-to-date actual.
Get rid of the year-to-date...
Projection.
Projection, yeah.
Morad, would you let me give a different type of an explanation to that?
I'm sorry, and I'm asking, Katina's going to correct me. It's the getting rid of the year-to-date actual, but have the year-to-date estimate, because we're just having a snapshot in that.
I would like to try to stay with the conforming with law, instead of throwing budgeting in here, because those I don't see are the same thing that the mayor was bringing up as trying to conform to law, because there's some issues with 803 that are totally different with conforming to law. But 805, definitely conforming to law, that's something under the proposal that the mayor is discussing, and I would like to keep on focus what his proposal was before we go off on 803, or another item, or another item.
Might be better to go one by one, because conformed to law is...
I was going to suggest a different process.
It can really get out like this.
I was going to suggest a different process, if you don't mind. We just start at the top, we go down them, but any one of them where we don't have discussion or argument, we assume we're okay with. So if you go, first one, second one, third one, if we don't talk about any one, that's a good one.
Sure.
Does that work?
You can stay up here if you want.
Dave wanted to say something.
Mayor Protem Grifon brought up the idea of our tradition of being more stringent than just state law, and that we may not want to lose that capability simply for the purposes of conforming to state law. And we had a lot of those discussions at the committee level with regards to those types of issues. And I think what you'll find that while we don't disagree with being more stringent on those things, that we're suggesting that the baseline for our charter should conform to state law, so that it rolls with state law as it changes. For instance, the city newspaper, the public record. Right now, if you stay with the language in the charter, you can change that once a year, annually.
Every two years.
Every two years, thank you, Robyn. So what we're suggesting by conforming to state law is giving you the minimum requirements, but then also allowing you to change that whenever you need to. So just because we're suggesting to conform to state law doesn't mean that you, as a council, might not ask for more detail or things to be done differently, practically speaking.
Very good.
So it's, we're trying to, in some respects, unhandcuff you to be able to have that flexibility and not have to constantly review the charter because state law has changed.
And that's also where your policies and procedures come in. I understand that you guys meet every year when new council members come on, and that is your directive back to staff, and so you can put those more stringent things in there back to staff.
Okay.
Okay.
So recommendation number one.
Can I make a comment?
On this one?
Yes.
Go ahead. You want to lead off?
I, well, are you going to lead off?
I was going to say, I'm not in favor of this.
Me either.
I'm not in favor of it.
I think, you know, we've had a long history of people volunteering to serve in these roles up here, and I know that occasionally I talk to council members and mayors from other cities around here that you get paid, and I'm always thinking in the back of my head, I'm glad I don't get paid. You know, I'm just lucky to be able to do this, you know, to give something back to the city, instead of me taking, you know, expecting. And I know you're probably going to say, well, we don't want to close the door on those people that would step forward if they had a little bit of compensation. Well, I think, you know, present company accepted, we do a pretty good job of getting the right seven people up here, you know, most of the time.
So this is one, to be quite honest, we expected you to reject.
So there's something here that we're supposed to reject? Tell us which ones are. Make it easy.
So this is the only one, this is the only one. But we had great discussion that this is a city built on volunteerism. We did do, city staff did a poll of cities around us, what they get paid, but I think it's good to bring up for this very reason, for you guys to reject that, to make sure that that is still our standard here within the community. And the way that it's written, it is written so that even if this did get passed, and it passed with the voters, that none of you would be able to vote yourself a salary. So you do see that it starts in 2030. So we looked at the least-tenured council member and say, when would they be off? And then that's when it started. So there was very deliberate conversation around this, and you're doing exactly what we expected you to do.
You have consensus on that, Morad?
Yes.
No go.
I'm going to make the counterargument here. I asked the TML for the data. We are the largest city in the state that does not have any compensation for council members. And I believe there are people who would be quality candidates up here, and maybe younger and have families and other obligations, that this is a sticking point for them, that they're volunteers. And nothing makes you have to take it. You can come up here and say, yeah, I'll donate it back, or I don't want to take it, that's fine. But I think we are unnecessarily segregating a piece of the possible candidates that might run, because they either can't afford to put the time in, or there's other issues that. So I think we're just being naive that there aren't good people out there that would like to serve, but a compensation would help them make up their mind.
We had a great deal of discussion on that, that thing. I'm more than comfortable.
No one's going to be able to hear you in the public, so.
And you actually have to ask to be recognized.
May I be recognized, Mayor?
We always recognize.
Get in prison, die.
Thank you.
Recognize.
We had a deep discussion on that, and the discussion did go to the inability of some who would like to, because it's become quite expensive. I may have spent $200 20 years ago, or something like that, at the most. However, I have seen and know the kind of money that goes out to campaign nowadays, and there are a great deal of people with qualifications who do not have those kind of deep pockets, or if they're a single mom, can't have to have a babysitter or something. So we took that into consideration, and it may be sometime in the future. I do come from the old school of, it's nice to be able to say, I don't get paid to do this, when someone's griping at you that you do it because of the love of the city and to serve. So we did take it into a great deal of consideration at the time. Thank you.
Well, unless I hear another voice in favor, I think we can scratch this one.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Be leery of the person who's running to get paid.
Yes.
I'm good.
Thank you.
So this next item was a conformance to state law, similar to the certificates of obligations, was intended to remove ambiguity. So there was some concern roughly a decade ago that the city did not have the ability to meet an executive session, despite what we're allowed to do in accordance with state law and despite past practices, to the extent that someone even reached out to the district attorney's office to press charges against us for meeting an executive session. Everything was found to be copacetic and fine, but to remove any ambiguity, we'd like the language or the committee recommended, the language be modified to mirror state law.
Can you support this?
Yes, me too.
I can.
Yes. A check mark next to that one.
Okay. The next one is 3.11, and so this one is the caption prescribing the penalty fine and forfeiture to be published.
Not to put Letty on the spot, but can you explain this one?
Yes, sir.
Just put her on the spot, by the way.
So this actually came up when I came on into the position, and I had to do publications for ordinances that required a penalty. So typically, the, in other municipalities, when they post, when there's a caption that has a fine of any sort, you simply publish the caption, and it clarifies the penalty and the cost of the fines. When I got here, the language in the charter requires that we put an additional section, which is the fine, the penalty, and the violation. So it's overly difficult to put all of that information into one giant publication, when really that information is captured in the caption, and it will simplify it, not just administratively, but also to the public, and it'll cut our costs significantly moving forward. We are not eliminating anything that we're telling them, except the duplication of the information of what it's violating. So if there's a fine associated with the violation of an ordinance related to, let's say, a zoning issue, well, we already know that in the caption, and right now, I'd have to restate something that's already there. So it's really...
And it has to be published.
Yes, sir. And it's really the publication, and streamlining the publication, so we just do the caption.
Yeah, we've actually run into this problem over the last three years or something, where we had to go back and redo.
Correct.
Okay, see, I agree, we need to clean this up. Correct.
Agreed.
So that's a result of exactly that issue.
Yeah, I know, I remember it really clearly.
Yes.
Got it.
Next.
The next one is on 311 as well, and so this is, you have two readings of ordinances, but there is some things in the charter that are stated that have one reading, and so one of them that we're adding, so adoption of budget, collection of taxes, canvassing election, those are all, just have one reading. So the other one that we're adding is if it required a public hearing or a notice required by the Texas Open Meetings Act. So the best example is things that went through P&amp;Z, then coming here, just needing that one reading.
I agree with that.
Do you want to add to?
So the rationale for that is, there are a number of things that this body legislates that require multiple months of consideration and deliberation, both at P&amp;Z and at council, and notices are sent out to property owners within 200 feet. We put up signs on the property in question. So it sort of labors the point to have two readings at council, especially when there's no changes from first reading to the next, second reading. There are things that the charter and state law already allow for one reading, as Robyn enumerated, with, for instance, the budget. This would make that in line with it. So if it's already noticed, P&amp;Z had their meeting, council has their meeting and has no changes to the ordinance as presented, to allow you that latitude to approve it on one reading as opposed to having multiple readings, is the suggestion here.
Yes.
Yes.
I have three, do I have four? Yes. Okay.
Next.
Okay. The next one is the city attorney. So again, this takes basically the administrative role off of you as a council and puts it on the day-to-day of our city manager. And so a lot of what we did with this one and the next one is, we wanted to make sure that things are put in place. I know you've done an ordinance on the city secretary, which we'll talk about that one next, but we wanted to kind of concrete it in the charter, but then also make sure that we're providing things out for the next five years, 10 years, so that it's not fluid. We want to make sure that our intent is concrete in the charter.
So I want to think about this one a little bit more.
Steve? Yeah, I would like to take this one off. I like, I think it's important for there to be a level of independence of the city attorney. I also feel like it's council's role to make the final selection. And while we're in a situation where we have a terrific city manager, and everybody gets along, and council gets along, it may not always be the case. And we have neighbors on one side of us where, you know, the city attorney and the city manager, and they had some bad blood. I think we're doing ourselves a disservice. I believe we should retain the ability to hire and terminate a city attorney and let them have independence from the city manager. Not to say they won't work great together. I know they will, but...
So if, another place in the charter, you already have to approve any department heads, so that would include the city attorney and the city secretary. So it has to come before...
But I want to still be able to pick them.
So, but you're also with their salary and the day-to-day operations of, you need to be here at 7:30, you need to, all of those things of the day-to-day management of it.
Yeah, I can see the argument, especially if you have a situation where the city manager and the attorney, the attorney might have to be looking into some legalities of what the city manager may do, and then the city manager has the ability to say, well, I don't want you, really want you looking at that, I'm going to fire you, and I'm going to hire someone else at my own discretion. I actually think that we could advance this paragraph just by adding, at the direction of council, city manager shall appoint competent. And just, we could probably even say, with the concurrence of council, city manager shall appoint a competent attorney. And I think you could possibly do that with city secretary, because we've already done it with ordinance, ordinance-wise. But always leaving the council as the buffer, being under the direction of council, I think that we could push this clean, just clean it up a little.
So if I can just give you guys a little bit more of what our discussion was, because we had great discussion over the city attorney, who the city attorney's client is, which is really the citizens of Friendswood, and the city attorney has a legal obligation, none of those go away. And so we talked about, she has rights and responsibilities to her client, being the citizens, and those don't go away, even if there's a management direction from the city manager. And so this is, and I actually like your changes, Robert.
It keeps us in the loop, and I think city council needs to be in the loop on the city secretary, especially the city attorney.
Absolutely. So our intent here was not to take city council out of the loop, our intent, and so if you need to wordsmith to get what our intent was, is the day-to-day operation. So there is a, basically in an org chart, the hard line for day-to-day management of that role, but the direction and the higher powers or the other roles and responsibilities, and that's why they are a special called-out section in the charter. They are different than other department heads, but it is really for the day-to-day operation, where you guys meet once a month. And so if there needs to be something that happens and that action can be taken, and the other thing is, you know, when we had this discussion, first I'll say, because we were dealing with people that were in the room, when we had this discussion, at first we did ask the city secretary and city manager and all city staff to leave, so that we could have very frank conversation. And then when we brought them back into the fold, one of the things that Morad said was, even on... even on department heads and city secretary and city attorney, any of that does, he's as strong as his last bad decision. So you guys have the right to recuse him from his duties if he were to do something shady and bring that in. And then there's also that the city attorney is bound by her ethics and her law license. And so we talked about all of those provisions in which the city secretary has certain responsibilities to protect us with elections and all of that. As the city attorney has provisions under their law license to protect the citizens as well.
Well, I I completely agree. I agree with that. But just just under the nature of the home rule municipality, we have a very strong city manager and a very weak mayor and council. And to take us out of the loop already weakens us further.
Not exceptionally weak.
Conceptually, well, no, not literally, but the way the home rule is set up, we have a very strong management team. Okay, and they're great. We don't know what that will be 10 or 15 years from now. But I think that you you could just modify this and not kick the whole thing out and modify it and keep the council in the loop and under our direction. They then will report to the city manager and that's really where it's coming from. We don't want them to be independent from the direction of the city manager because the city manager hears from us every day.
So and and we part of.
My my vote is no.
Well, I was going to say, I think it needs to be wordsmithed some more because I I listened to them and I've been really thinking about this one a lot. We don't have some of the circumstances, Mo and I had this conversation that I've had experiences with where we had to have an attorney for the board and an attorney for the administration over something the administration had made a decision on. So there's not really that in the city. But there just seems that that the day to day operation, I understand. And there is a license where the attorney has is obligated according to their license to do the ethical thing. But I think we all get along so well and we're all so respectful of one another. But like Robert or John said, that may not always be the case and you want to protect the future. So I just think we could wordsmith this a little bit more that would would indicate that city council in conjunction with, I think I heard, or the day to day operations or concurring with council that that the city manager and council were were together on this and not such a streamlined. I think that might, you know, I can't think of all the worst case scenarios, but I'm just trying to think of.
And and Mr. Smith wants to say something, but we did talk about when we did not have such a strong city manager, we played out those cases because we had that in the recent past. And so that that's why.
Did we have a very, very weak mayor?
That.
Very weak. We have a weak mayor.
Wow. Are you sure you still want to say something?
I'm still reeling from Robert's statements, like very pregnant? No, we have a weak mayor system.
But at that point, this was the mayor that.
I mean, we have a city manager that directs day to day operations and we are his board of directors. And you know, while I'm still have the platform here, I'll say maybe, you know, we don't want to wordsmith. I mean, we're trying to clarify some of these charter statements so that they're clearer. If we're going to go in and we have to wordsmith this one all to hell to make it, you know, say what we want, doesn't that make it unclear? I I don't know.
Well, our intent may not have been captured as as you guys in in reading it the same. So, you know, I don't think any of us are taking offense to wordsmithing. And that's why I wanted you to make sure that you understood what our intent was. Because I think you guys are saying the same thing as what our intent was. And if it didn't come across in these words, we'll blame the lawyer because they wrote it up? I'm just kidding. No, I think Karen helped out with that one.
Ma'am?
But that's why we had great discussion over what's our intent. And if it didn't come through on the words, then we want to make sure. But our our intent is for this not to be what's right for today, but what's right for five years and 10 years. And if you want to.
I'd like to maybe propose that we let this idea ferment for another cycle and come back the next charter review.
I would agree.
And see what we feel like then. Because I think we're I I know what you're saying. And yes, we're, I think city secretary, you're going to get rave reviews on on making it so for the city secretary, which we've already done essentially, but make it clear in the charter. But city attorney, I think I'd like to leave it status quo for another go around.
Me too.
Okay, so.
Mayor, if you'd let me.
No.
I promise I won't add too much to it. So I'd I'd like to say that both your city manager and your city secretary, in our discussions that we had both said over and over again that they were okay with the way that it is now. That they would be okay with whatever way that the council and the public decided was the way that should be done. That neither of them were taking initiative to to think that it needed to be changed, that things were working just fine. So I I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I want to make sure that we brought that point out, that it it was new. It's it's different. You just went through having to make those decisions from an ordinance standpoint and take the opportunity to make some of those changes. And that, as Robin said, we were looking at this from the standpoint that when Letty retires and the new evil city secretary comes in.
Talking about the attorney right now.
Yeah, that we would have things in place that would work well for the the city of Friendswood. And so it should not be a surprise to you that we spent a significant amount of discussion on this. Just as the thoughts that you've been having and the concerns that you brought up, we delve deep into that and we're trying to come up with the best product that we could. If you do want to wait on this one, I would suggest you push this to the two year timeframe and not to the five year, because the sooner that it gets put to bed, the the better that it would be, I think, overall.
Well, take a note because you all are the ones that we're going to call back in two years. So this could be the first one that you discuss.
You just want to appoint that committee now?
Thanks, Mayor. One of the strongest weak mayors we've had right there. Dave Smith, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so the next one, so I think you got a no on that one. So the next one is the city secretary.
This essentially just.
We're all good on that.
We're all good on that. This just cleans up what we basically have already done by resolution or ordinance, whatever we did. So I think we're good with that one.
Okay. So the next one is 5.06, action on petition. So I'm not sure if you have your word document in front of you, but the language that we're striking out is made available at the polls. So this is the what they're having at the polling places, the 700 polling locations in in Harris County. And it would be available at the city secretary's office and then also posted on the website 15 days immediately preceding the election.
And this one makes great sense.
Yeah, I agree.
This is catching up with the modern.
This is technology as well. Yes, and conforming to law, so.
I know James O'Brien is surprised I said that.
Okay, so 8.03, the annual budget. So I'm going to bring Katina up here because if y'all have questions, I'm going to let her do that.
Correct. And on this, as Katina's coming up, I just touched on one section of the the changes with regard to year to day snapshot. There's multiple changes in section 8.03, but I'll let Katina elaborate.
Yes, on this one, it's really just to allow our budget document to reflect the recommendations of the Government Finance Officers Association, which governs like our government, our budget document as well as our annual financial report. There, as Marad alluded to earlier, that June 30th column in our budget document is truly just a snapshot of where we are at that point. We do use some of that information to project out the remainder of the year to get to the year end estimate. But what is recommended or suggested by the GFOA is to just as long as we have a prior year column, our adopted budget, amended budget and a projection for the year end to compare our proposed budget, that's what's what's recommended and required. So this would just eliminate that.
Does this make it easier for you?
It it would. I was like, it would.
Katina, would you still show the percentage where we're at? You know, that column that shows the percentage of either revenues at that point or expenditures at that point? Are we talking about deleting that too?
Actually, I think you're referring to the monthly financial report that has the percentages in our budget document that's not included.
And we would we would include that on the monthly. The other aspect of this is to comply with state law with regard to public hearings. So state law is very specific. If you're raising taxes, you have to hold this number of hearings and send out, put out these notices in the newspaper. Our charter conflicts in some aspects and has requirements that are different from that of state law. We want to, we have to follow state law, but it makes it a lot harder when you have things that don't quite mesh up. So we're recommending the changes to the charter reflect what state law stipulates and dictates with regard to public hearings.
Well, let me just ask a quick question because when I review the budget, I I go through every line item and I look at every column. And when I'm looking at seeing what's been scratched, like summary of proposed programs, list of capital improvements, which are proposed to be undertaken during the fiscal five years. I I'm not sure what we're doing away with in the budget that I look at every year. And I really want to advance this too. I really want to push this forward. But I would like for one item to be put back in that's been scratched. And it's down under B, we're just above submission on or before the first day of August each year. And just above that, it was scratched, it says such other information as may be required by council. I would like to have that put back in there. So if I have something that I would like to look at, I have that wording in there that says such other information required by council. And I and I think that all this other stuff can be scratched. And then I can say, hey, well, I really want to see that summary of our programs or maybe the capital improvements that aren't going to be in the budget that I'm used to seeing.
Sure.
So if we could put that line back in there, I'm pretty comfortable.
And I can, and I know exactly, and feel free to add to this. The charter committee looked at every provision in the charter from an aspect of is, is this something that our this charter represents the constitution of the city of Friendswood? Is this something that needs to be spelled out succinctly in our constitution? Or is this something that is handled in our policies and procedures? As we discussed on section 5.06, it made sense back when we had two polling locations to put the actual ballot and ordinance calling for the ballot at the polling locations. But now with the changes to how elections are held in their 700 plus polling locations, it doesn't make sense to stipulate that we have an ordinance printed out at every one of those ballot locations with our information on it because we physically will not be able to comply with our charter. In essence, this is the same suggestion. We're not removing things from the budget. You're going to continue to get the budget as you do today with all the components therein. You're just not going to have it stipulated word for word in our constitution as it is today. But we'll gladly put that such other information as may be required by council back in.
It just makes me feel more comfortable that anytime I request that and it's required, let's do it.
And please know that if council asks us for financial information, we're going to provide. We will provide.
Our finance department always gets recognized every year for the outstanding incredible job that they do. And I don't want to report less. I just want to see what the wonderful work that's always been put out by your your finance department. It's just awesome.
Yes.
All right.
I have one question, and I'm not suggesting we put it back in, but the column that you're striking, do we know why it was added in the first place, since it wasn't required by law?
Actually, it, I don't know if if it was actually or if it's, it has not been required by law for a while, that June 30th column. And it really just appears on our fund schedules in the budget document, that section and the departmental section where it's our operational. Again, as Marad mentioned, it's it is strictly just a snapshot in time at June 30th. There are expenditures that will that will be recorded between July 1 and September 30th that we try to estimate as best we can, but we would do that regardless of whether you saw that June 30th.
The best snapshot, you're right, the monthly reports we get.
Sure.
Yes.
That's that's as good as it gets.
Absolutely.
In regards to Councilmember Branson's question, there's a provision in the charter that we're recommending striking. And it, what led to that snapshot was an interpretation of this section that I'm about to read. And that is that the current fiscal year and actual income and expenditures of preceding fiscal year compared to estimated budget be included. Well, the actual is taken literally. Well, when we prepare this budget, it's done several months in advance of when the budget is actually proposed. The only actual figure we have is what we actually have collected or expended. And and so it's a interpretation of that line that's made it misleading and difficult.
That answers my question.
Thank you.
I'm good with striking.
Okay.
Me too.
Yeah, we're good.
Everybody good with that?
Keep this one. Next.
Okay, the next one, I'm also going to defer questions to Marad, 8.05, borrowing for capital improvements.
I think we're good with that.
I think we're good with that one.
I think it's got answered too.
We're good.
That one got answered.
So that's all the tier one. So if you want to move to tier two?
Tier two.
General powers. So this is being able to acquire property within Galveston, Harris and Brazoria counties.
Good.
I'm good with that.
Good.
Qualifications, 3.02. It is council member must be a qualified voter. It currently says and meet the conditions in 6.02, items one, two and three. But if you meet those conditions, they are must be 18 years old, be a quali. Those are things that you can't go undo, like you can't get younger. So once they're met, as long as you stay a qualified voter. So they were kind of in contradiction, so we just wanted to clean that up.
Good.
I can support that. Me too.
Okay, 6.04, canvassing and election results.
Okay, I've got a problem with this one, Rob.
Okay.
You know, that photo you take at the end of the evening when all the votes have come in? And I know it's not the true campus of the vote, but I know that that has become kind of a thing. It's like, so can it be called something else? Because I think if you take that away, there's there's just a.
So you're still, you would still do that and you're still doing your bribery oath? So you're still doing your, you know, song and dance back there, for lack of better terms. But we just want to make sure that we're not for the charter, you're supposed to and Letty, if you want to help out on this one, we want to make sure that you're not being put into office when the results have not been canvassed because that's actually done at the next council meeting.
And I can respect that. It's a little bit of tongue in cheek.
So there's some things that you can do that are ceremonial.
That's exactly what it is.
That we can, we can do unofficially or it can be written into your policy. There are some limitations in being able to kind of declare an unofficial winner when we are having joint elections with Harris County. Many of their results don't come in until four, five o'clock in the morning. So there are some limitations of of when you can have that ceremonial unofficial results kind of thing. So by removing it in the charter as it is written now, it eliminates this contradiction of having someone take office prior to making the election results official via the canvassing process. So.
So maybe just call it ceremonial. I mean, I'm tongue in cheek.
Also, you know, when most of you got elected, we were doing the elections here and we had control of those. And so we had results within an hour. And so based on what we have to do now, like she said, it it might, and if you still want to be here at four or five in the morning, I think Letty's going to want to go home. But.
I'll be here if you want me.
But I I think just some of the technology advancements and what we have to do for being by county doesn't allow us to to have that.
And that's okay. I was I was being a little tongue in cheek.
We're all good with that, right?
Yeah, we're good.
Good with this one?
You might have to go through it again.
We're good.
We're good.
Next.
Next.
All right, 910, we're almost there. 910, which is the Public Service Corporations to File Annual Reports. This is taking a shawl and turning it into a may.
Good with that.
City newspaper, this is saying at a, we're adding at a minimum. And this allows us to change the paper on an as needed basis.
Good with that.
Good with that.
Okay, so like I said, I, that's the last of those.
Well, I have one I want to add. I want I want council to consider. Section 6.02, filing for office, section B, which is the petition of 25 signatures. I was really hoping that that would rise to the top. You know how we have to go around and get 25 signatures first?
I have my petition back there.
I know, but that doesn't, that just doesn't feel right. This is a city of 40,000. It just seems a little discriminatory and a little exclusionary to me. It just doesn't feel right. I never understood it. I understood when I've asked questions that it's been there since the beginning. We were a much smaller town then, maybe everybody knew each other and they decided, uh-uh, no, that person's not going to get 25 people in town decided. But we are 40,000. But we are 40,000, it just doesn't seem right, and I would love to see that taken out. It just, I've never heard a reason for it.
I actually thought it was state law and not the number. The number is, there's some fancy formula, like the most amount of votes you've gotten in an election, 1% or something like that to come up with that number. But I actually thought it was in the state law.
I don't think it is.
So there is a state law. We did talk about this one, and you can either have the signatures or you can pay a fee, Letty, correct me if I'm wrong, or you can pay a fee to have that. And so being part of the city of volunteerism and being part of the community, we, part of our discussion was, if you can't go get 25 signatures, then we really don't want you on the ballot in the first place.
I can clarify one thing. State law does not require you to have a petition attached to your filing. However, Home Rule Cities may attach a petition process if it desires to do so. The only time that state law requires you to have a petition process in the filing is if you have a filing fee. We do not have a filing fee. So state law doesn't require us to have a petition process. It is something that is, that in the discussion was shown to be something that was very traditional to Friendswood.
I don't like it.
I kind of like it, just that there's a little bit of a speed bump.
You think we need to up it from 25 to say 50?
You don't, you don't just walk into the city secretary's office and say, put my name on the ballot. There's a little bit of a speed bump, a wicket that somebody's got to go through. They've got to at least go out and get some signatures.
I agree with the mayor. You can't find 25 people to sign petitions so you can run, then you probably shouldn't be running.
My goodness, who would think that was a bad idea?
I do. I do, because the school board doesn't require it.
All right.
So, but before you exit me from the podium, I do want to thank you guys for putting together such a stellar committee. You did a great job, Mayor. And I want to wholeheartedly, on behalf of the whole committee, thank Marad and Karen and Mary Kay, who has now retired, we sent her into retirement, and Letty. They were a big part of our discussions. They were there with us every night, and they were a big part of telling us the whys, and so we could not have done what we did without them. So we appreciate your guys' help, and we appreciate you guys entrusting us to do this.
Thank you again for your service.
Thank you all.
I proposed your names, but all seven of us voted for you, so we did, we did all. So.
Well, most of us. I don't know if it was unanimous or not.
Can we take five minutes, Mayor?
Let's take five minutes. I'm sure that most of these people want to escape anyway.
Item 7. Appendix C, zoning ordinance amendments regarding community care homes.
I'll get some.
Hey, Chief, you want to take it outside?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Come on, Chief, let's go.
I now call to order this public hearing regarding proposed amendments to Appendix C, zoning ordinance, Section 7.P.6, permitted use table to amend the zoning districts in which the following makes uses are allowed. 6232 residential, intellectual, and development disability, mental health, and substance abuse facilities. 623311 continuing care retirement communities with onsite nursing, and 623312 assisted living facilities for the elderly without onsite nursing. And to remove subnote V5.S1, site plan approval required in amendments to Section 20. Definitions to remove the term personal care facility and add the term assisted living facility. I would now like to request that staff summarize the subject of this public hearing.
Good evening and Happy New Year to everybody. So these proposed changes are to bring, intended to bring our zoning ordinance in compliance with state law. And there was discussion earlier about the difference in our ordinance and state law, which I think a lot of times is a moving target. But, so we just want to align our definitions with assisted living definitions. Chapter 123 of the Human Resources Code for the state defines a person with a disability, and they regulate facilities. There are some facilities that are actually protected by federal law, which includes community, community homes, which allow care for up to six residents and two staff members. State law does reference some requirements for those types of facilities. They can't be located closer than one half mile from one another. They can't alter the exterior of the residential structure, and they can't have any more parking spaces than the number of rooms in the home. So they do have some minimal requirements, but we can't prohibit them. Several years, we put the S1 process in our ordinance, and it's not really a valid process. So we want to remove that and get ourselves back in line. P&amp;Z did have a public hearing on December 9th, and they voted unanimously 5 to 0 to recommend these changes as well.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. There being no one signed up to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing and move on to Item 7B, which is the consideration and possible action regarding the first reading of an ordinance amending all of that stuff that I just said.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Did you get all that, Letty?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. City managers' report, item 8.
Yes, sir. Well, this evening I have two items to brief council on. One was the employee service awards. Back on December 10th, we held our annual Christmas dinner for the city of Friendswood, the Employee Christmas Dinner. During that time, we recognized 34 employees for their years of service to the city of Friendswood in five, 10, 15 year increments, so on and so forth. If you would indulge me for a quick second, I want to read the names of those that were recognized. Sean McCaffrey in our police department, James Ruthstrom in PD, Brock O'Barr in PD, Steve Ruestrom, Fire Marshal's Office, James O'Brien, our IT Director, Ruby Anika, sorry, Anke in administrative, sorry, in Human Resources, Kristen Rejack in PD, Emily Roach in the library, Carson Jacobs in PD, Mark Vale in CDD, Kristen Gouyar in CDD, Santiago Aguilera in Public Works, Ivan Ortega in Public Works, Jose Abara in Public Works. Those were all the five-year recipients. Rebecca Wall in PD, Pat Rifle in Administrative Services Municipal Court, Scott Muir in PD, Becky Bennett in CDD, and Jose Arrendondo in Public Works. Those were the 10-year recipients. Brian Holmes in the Fire Marshal's Office, Jorge Paz in Public Works, Sean Kiesler in Fire Marshal's Office, Mindy Sanchez in PD, Gerardo Azza in Parks, Renee Abada, our Public Works Director, Brandon Blair in PD. Those were our 15-year award recipients. In the 20-year category, Eric Segura in Public Works, Gary William in Parks, Kim Zubek in Library, and Will Higgs in PD. For our 25-year, Ryan Jenkins in PD, and Mike Cordero in PD. For 30 years, we recognized Lupe Aguilera in Public Works. And this year, we had a 40-year recipient, Barry Yodas in PD, which I'm sure each and every one of you on council likely has gotten a ticket from Barry, so you can thank him I appreciate you letting me do that, but it's always a testament to the city of Friendswood to just show the years of service to the community. And anytime you have employees that exceeded 40 years of service, that tells you something about the organization and its leadership that's sitting at the diocese with mayor and council. So thank you for your support and your leadership in this community.
Hear that, Karen?
Yes, sir.
40 years, just around the corner. Starts with the first month.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to highlight this evening is our new annual, and we had our first library gala a couple of years ago, but with COVID, we had to put the hiatus on it. But tickets go on sale today for the gala that will be held on Saturday, March 5th. It's intended to be a fundraiser, and it's sponsored by the Friends of the Friendswood Library. They put on a spectacular evening of festivities that will include dinner hors d'oeuvres, drinks, and a night at the library. This year's theme is night circus. I believe Councilmember Rocky is intimately involved in this, as is the mayor foreman. If you haven't gotten your tickets, please do. They're $100 apiece, and they go to a worthwhile cause, the Friendswood Public Library.
And we've already raised?
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand, I think.
So we are well on its.
But we haven't started to spend yet, so we got some spending to do.
We're on our way to buying that library mobile vehicle.
Yes.
Which will be a thorn in your side, because it has recurring costs, I hear. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Thank you.
Something that the library needs. All right. Item 9, business items. Discuss and take possible action approving a license agreement with the Avalon and Friendswood Community Association, Inc. Maintain the medians on Friendswood Parkway. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Thanks, and Rocky, is what I heard?
Karen, Mark.
Okay. Whatever you write down is going to be, we'll swear to it.
Okay.
But is Avalon going to set some sort of record on the amount of motions we've had on them?
Maybe. I don't want to go back into town. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Let them take care of the medians. Okay, Item B, discuss and take possible action ratifying the city manager's signature on a contract purchase and close on 704 North Clear Creek Drive, Friendswood, Texas, also known as Lot 17 of Friendswood Forest, a subdivision in Galveston County, and a lease agreement with Ms. Glenda Gatton for said property.
Second.
Did you hear that, Tom?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. All in favor? 70. Item C, discuss and take possible action approving the award of a guaranteed maximum price contract for construction services for fire station number two reconstruction and training field upgrades. Do I have a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor? Looking at it. Chief Cause out there, representing. Good to see you. Okay, Item D, discussion and take possible action approving the award of a guaranteed maximum price contract for construction services for public safety building expansion. Not so fast. City staff has yet to receive the performance and payment bonds for this project. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to approve this agenda item, subject to receipt of performance and payment bonds acceptable to the city.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Discuss and take possible action authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an election services contract with Galveston County, Texas, for the city's general and special elections to be held on May 7th, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Sounds like we definitely will have an election on May 7th. Maybe no candidates from the council, but at least some.
Yes, sir.
Charter stuff, yes. Discuss and take possible action authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a joint election agreement with Harris County, Texas, for the city's general and special elections to be held on May 7th, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Item 10, resolutions and ordinances. A, consideration and possible action on the second and final reading of an ordinance regarding the street name change of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard to Friendswood Parkway to include the existing thoroughfare from FM 528 West Parkwood Avenue to the League City and Friendswood City Limit, and the future thoroughfare planned from FM 528 West Parkwood Avenue to the Pearland and Friendswood City Limit. I heard a motion?
Yes.
And a second from Sally, I think. All in favor?
Now, based on our charter review, would that still be a second reading, or would that only be a single reading?
Since there were no public hearings associated with that name change, it would require two readings.
Okay, gotcha.
Item B, consideration of possible action regarding the first and final reading of a proposed ordinance amending city of Friendswood, Texas, ordinance number 2021-22, passed and approved September 13th, 2021, same being an ordinance approving and adopting the city's general budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022 by approving budget amendment four.
Approved. Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
She can't be around, she's too quick.
All right. Item 12. Item 12, executive session. We will now recess into and convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.087 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect, and 551.071 to seek the advice of the city's attorney on legal matters related thereto. I now reconvene our open meeting of the Friendswood City Council and announce that in accordance with Section 551.102 of the Texas Government Code, no action was taken in executive session.
Okay.